...into the workshop. Mr. Kennedy, you have opening exercise.
Thank you Chairman Dodd. We're not going to take much time this morning, but before we do the pledge, I want to just remind us and ask that we have a moment of silence. On February 15th, 2018, a situation took place that those of us in education always fear at our schools. At Marjory Stonem Douglas High School in Parkland, Florida, a senseless attack by not an outsider, but unfortunately by a former student took place. As a result, 17 lives were lost and countless injuries, some that may last for countless years. Among those that died were 14 wonderful students and three teachers who went out of their way to save the lives of other students. I ask if we could rise and if we could just have a moment of silence for those that have been. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We do need to adopt the agenda. Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Bryant, to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five, zero. Citizen comments? Ms. Veronami here. Do we have any citizen comments?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. No citizen comments. I want to remind you, if you would like to comment, the board, we have green cards in the back room to fill out, and we certainly welcome public comment here in our board meetings. Okay, next up is item number three, educational services. Mr. Hebert.
I'm requesting approval of the purchase renewal of services provided by Performance Matters to the Citrus County School Board for the period of March 15th, 2018 through March 14th, 2019.
I move to approve the purchase of the services by the Board of Education, School Board, March 15th, 18th, through March 14th, 19th.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Ms. Powers, second by Mr. Kennedy, to approve the purchase of renewal services provided by Performance Matters. Is there any discussion?
I like it.
Is there any other discussion?
As long as the teachers are using it, and it makes a difference, they were data-driven, so.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero.
Next item, ask for approval of $1,803,200 in funding from the Florida Department of Education for the Florida Best and Brightest Teacher Scholarship Program.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Counsel, to move approval of $1,803,200 in funding from the Florida Department of Education for Florida Best and Brightest Teacher Scholarship Program. Is there any discussion?
This is the most wonderful worst thing we have to do. So, I am happy that teachers are getting, you know, receiving funds. This is not the way it should happen, but I will make sure that the money flows to them. Just want to make sure I say it again.
Can we just one, the question that I asked also about the question versus the like principal program, we didn't have a request by any principal scholarship program. And so that's why on the front of that page, there's only faculty teachers, but I wanted to ensure everyone knew that included both, it just happens to be displayed this year.
Well, there's actually two different statutes. One statute is for the best and brightest teacher program, and then a different statute is for the principal program. And with the principal program, it is, we don't apply for it, we don't have principals that request it. It is, the state basically tells us if we had any principals qualify based on the number of teachers that qualified for it, for, you know, for school. So, when we were informed that this year we did not have any principals that qualified for it, we did not obviously have any money going towards that. However, the state does, when they grid us that money, they did put it together into one pot, saying, here's all of the money for all teacher and principal recipients, if you have any, of course. So, we did not for this year, so that's why on the front, we just noted the teacher scholarship program, because that is where all of the money that we are getting from, you know, the DVO is going to.
Just one other thing, and this is going to sound judgmental, it's not judgmental on our district, our superintendent, or any of the staff. The challenge is, because of this program, there are a large number of our specialists, our deans, and our TOSSs that at times get left out of the variable. So, that means for them to go into those roles, many of which are emerging leader roles, they actually have to take a pay cut to be a part of that, when being expected to do more work. At McDonald's, they would call those a shift manager. We give you a raise, a paper, but we put a lot more hours on your plate. That's a challenge, though, that I do think as a district, we don't know 100% how this year's legislation is going to shake out. Senate has one version of addressing this, House wants to maintain the current one. But if we are going to have talented people at those levels, and that we're going to keep attracting them, we're going to have to look at something, and I know we have no more money, but the challenge we're going to have is we're not going to have the quality people we believe should be applying for those positions, when they're going to have to look at anywhere from a $1,200 cut to, in some cases, if they were getting the full best and brightest, they could be at $7,200, they could be losing to go into those positions to work more hours and have more responsibility. So, it's, again, it is not a criticism on our district, our superintendent, or anyone, and I think so, but that is a challenge.
They have great papers to do that sometimes.
They have lots of things that they have to do, that, so I would never want to say that publicly, than to say that because they don't do those things, they are doing less because they do not, they have a great deal of responsibilities. I hope we're not really feeling that way. Are we really saying that they should be paid less?
No, no, no.
But you just said that.
No, I said that they applied for the jobs.
But when they applied for those jobs, that was not part of it. That was not implied that they would be the ones left out. They applied for those jobs and then all of a sudden found themselves where the state did that.
Well, yeah, the state's.
Right, but one thing, they're not really taking a pay cut. I know what you're saying is they don't have the opportunity to make the extra money, but we're not cutting their pay because they-
Everybody else moved up but theirs.
If they qualified for best and brightest.
No, they can't. They can't qualify.
I know, well, right, but that's how you're saying, that's where the pay cut, because they don't have the opportunity to make-
No, no, the reason, the only way they can qualify is if they have teacher, if they have students assigned to them.
Correct.
So, if they're the district here, they are not permitted to have students assigned to them because they are training our teachers. But they are still qualified in all of our documentation as educators, but they don't, they do not qualify. Deans often don't qualify because they don't have students assigned to them, and all of our district TOSSs, I believe, specialists do not qualify. So, they can't even qualify for it.
I guess it's just semantics. I mean, we're not cutting their pay, though, their-
Every other educator got, was entitled to it, but those that have students.
Correct.
Now, guidance counselors, I think in some cases, it depends on the school. Some guidance counselors got it if they were assigned some students, but not all.
Correct.
And, again, so that means all of their peers are getting paid at a higher rate than they are, purely because of the law.
I understand. I'm very clear.
And I, I mean, that, to me, is, we would never pass a raise that way, we've never had passed a raise since I've been here, where we would say, well, this teacher doesn't get it, and this teacher does get it. And that is what the state did to us by saying that. And, again, these are, in particular, our emerging leaders, because those roles, I think, typically you hire with those being the next generation of our leaders, and we're saying, well, you can have the job, but we're going to actually get a little bargain from you because you won't get that. And what's going to happen? And I can tell you, I hear it now, and I'm sure you all have heard it, somebody who says, I'm not going to apply for that position because I'm going to have to take a pay cut. So, we don't get some people applying for positions. Right now, we have, we had a Title I position, but do we have any specialists right now coming open at this point?
We have the social studies TOSA position, and then we have a technology position, tech TOSA, that has been open all year.
It's been open all year.
So, the social studies opened in January.
It's going to change how we have to do our staffing plans. It is going to have an impact.
And that's something for superintendent, obviously, to look at as far as, as we go forward.
Glad to do that.
But I do agree with Mr. Kennedy, this is, you know, we're proving this money, it's for those, the 126 teachers that are receiving $7,200, that's pretty nice, but it is still a way that goes around local control, to be able to give raises as we see fit.
And don't forget it's based on a test from 30 years ago.
That's correct. Yeah.
Does that determine if you were going to be a good teacher or not?
Certainly.
When you were in high school.
And by the way, I'm, you know how much against I am, full disclosure, my spouse happens to be one that qualifies, and she'll tell you, it should not be done the way it's done.
Okay. We do have a motion and a second. We need to vote. First of all, is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five, zero.
Mr. Hebert, before you leave, would you please share with the board where you'll be from?
I know.
Friday.
I know where you'll be from.
At four o'clock, I will be in Lakeland, Florida Southern College, doing my final defense for my dissertation. At the next board meeting, I'll be able to use two different letters in front of my name.
At the end of your presentation, is that when they congratulate you?
At that point, you are, may not graduate, I graduate officially in May, but once you do your final defense, then you're able to use those two letters, I'm excited.
And that should mean cake.
And so I take it, when you, when you reach that level, you will be there for graduation, right?
Oh, I have planned.
Branson Auditorium, you know, I got my bachelor's degree from Florida Southern, so I know the campus well, but-
Great congratulations, I enjoyed my time.
Hope your dissertation hits good as well.
What was your dissertation on, curiosity?
It was a case-
The relationship between superintendent and student.
It would have been a great one, though. No, it was on leadership implications in mathematics at the elementary level, so really looking at what a leader does to improve mathematics at elementary school.
You couldn't get any more specific than that?
It's pretty specific. 70 pages, it's pretty specific.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, very good. Item number four, school support services. Mr. Bishop. Ms. Wayne?
Human Resources.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ask the board to approve the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the golden rod, and thank you, Mr. Bandler, for sending out the copy yesterday.
Move approval with removing Regina Allegrada as, from resignation from drop.
Second.
I made the motion, it was seconded.
We have to sign her paperwork.
Okay, I will amend my motion to move approval of instructional and support recommendation as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Bryant to accept the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the golden rod. Is there any other discussion?
We love you.
Yeah. Feelings mutual.
Okay, see no other discussion, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five, zero.
Next, I ask the board to approve the job title change for the Director of Information Services to Director of Educational Technology, and to approve the changes to the job description.
I want to read the details over time, and one thing that I didn't realize was the number of days that this applied, because I was looking at some other job descriptions. I don't understand why this is the scale on this one, this is the scale on this one. But then I found out that, how many days is it that, this covers 251?
251.
51, right. And I didn't realize that, so when I, when I saw it, oh my gosh, I don't understand this, that was why, because I didn't have the days. And obviously, it was more or less, you know, like, less than 200 weeks.
Yes.
I just want to thank the superintendent Hemel, Assistant Superintendent Mullen, and Executive Director Scott Hebert, for the strategic in-depth review of these positions. I really appreciate the systematic approach. This has been hard, losing Dr. Gettys. Very hard. But as Dr. Gettys said, this is also a good opportunity, and superintendent staff has taken it as an opportunity to redevelop these positions in a strategic way, to really address our students, our teachers, and our schools' needs faced in some difficult times. You listened to my concerns, because I had some concerns, and you really tried to integrate that approach in saying, listen, we may not be able to address everything today, but we can look at this as the beginning point. I just have to say, you know, our Citrus County school's success has been strategic because it's been rooted in standards-based instruction. And the driving force of that of late has largely been technology integration and the embedded use of technology in the standards-based instruction. Some may think that when the state removed the digital textbook mandate, that it removed the requirements for digital integration. By far, it did not, because every bit of our Florida standards are embedded into technology integration. But to me, and I know you've heard me say this, we must, we must, we must be properly preparing students to be successful at the next school level, so that they graduate with the skills to be successful in their academic and careers. And we, right now, are having to prepare our Citrus County students for their careers and their jobs, for jobs that aren't even created yet. And that's been a real challenge that we're under. I am so grateful that you've done this, I think this is a great step forward. You know, one of the things that I was talking to Mr. Hebert about, because he knows a young man in the armed forces right now who's a weapons specialist, and we talk about something that years ago would have just been, just a job that any person, you know, would have, they might be someone that didn't have much technology background and understanding. You can't be a weapons specialist without having to understand how to calibrate a machine, how to use a computer. You can't work as a janitor at Oak Hill Hospital unless you know how to use a tablet, because all of your orders come through that tablet. You can't apply for a job at Walmart without the use and understanding of a tablet. So, when we say that we're having to embed our standards-based instruction, it goes so deep and so far. I know we've got challenges, we're going to talk about those capital challenges, we need the right leaders in place for this, and so, I know it's been a lengthy thing, but superintendent, I'm grateful that you, you're looking and doing this. Thank you. And with that, I'll at least make the motion to approve the job title change for Director-
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
There is a mistake on there, if you'll let Mr. Hebert correct it, so your motion can include the correction.
Sure, absolutely.
It's, it's the Director of Educational Technology is to report to the Assistant Superintendent. It's listed as the Executive Director, but we have switched that to the Assistant Superintendent.
And I have to say, that was, I mean, I think that's a smart move, it's not new to Mr. Mullen. I think that largely that position in one form or another is reported to you for almost a decade, I think, in some fashion, so I would like to make the motion to approve the job title change for Director of Informational Services to Director of Educational Technology to also include a modification to report to the Assistant Superintendent, which would be the Assistant Superintendent, I'm sorry.
Oh, School Operations.
It is of School Operations, okay. Assistant Superintendent of School Operations, and, go ahead, can I include approval of the new job description of Coordinator of Educational Technology as well?
We have two separate agenda items, so I would rather take them individual, Mr. Kennedy.
Then I'll take, then I'll do the Director of Informational Services to Director of Educational Technology reporting to the superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the job title change for the Director of Information Services to Director of Educational Technology reporting to the Assistant Superintendent of School Operations. We're open for discussion. Any comments or questions?
Nice changes.
I have a question now on the posting, and how is this going to go on the posting of this position?
For this position, there will be no posting.
Okay, so-
My understanding is Mr. Chamberlain's job description and title will change at this point, so we will just do another form, a change form.
Okay, so when Dr. Gettys retires, and that's going to be our next item, is the position, or the title change, that position, though, will, according to the job description, report to this new Director of Educational Technology?
That is correct.
We're merging one position and bringing the other one from a director to a coordinator.
That is correct.
So, we're actually kind of, not that we're going to save a lot of money, but, well, Dr. Gettys is retiring, he's been here forever, so we'll save a ton.
Big money.
There is about a 20.
But there is a little, yeah, I was just going to say, because one's at a director level, one's at a coordinator level.
All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes five, zero.
Next item is to approve the new job description for Coordinator of Educational Technology.
I move approval of the new job description for Coordinator of Educational Technology.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Kennedy, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the new job description for Coordinator of Educational Technology.
Just for confirmation, and I know we've talked about this, and Mr. Hebert, you can, it may be answer, or Mr. Mullen, this looks to be that this is making that shift to curriculum focus on this position, at least looking at the job description.
Absolutely.
And executing that at the school level. And, again, I think that is the right approach, and it mirrors some of the other successful implementations elsewhere, so congratulations and thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? So, I've got a question in regards to the network and the responsibility of our computer network. That currently is under the Director of Instructional Technology, which is Dr. Gettys. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And now with this position change to a coordinator, is the network, and with the focus on curriculum, is the network responsibility still going to be?
That would be the director's responsibility.
Okay. So, I noticed in these performance responsibilities, we're really changing the job description from what Mr. Dr. Gettys now has, we're refocusing that into a more narrow description, would you agree with that, or?
Yes, I think we're trying, we're trying to align our technology delivery, and so making sure that we have the coordinator that's really going to focus on the academics, still working in conjunction with the director, making sure that both of them can help support our district, but the director would have the knowledge and skill set to be able to support all of the other components of that, the hardware, really looking at how all those things operate. And then the coordinator is going to be more of our educational liaison, making sure that the programs and the tools that we have for teachers are the right tools. And supporting like our curriculum, we're adopting new curriculum, they'll be involved with that, they'll lead that charge to help connect that, but also having, you know, a lot of our curriculum is digital, so they'll have to have that knowledge as well as to how that fits and connects.
You know, Dr. Gettys, as we know, is an unusual animal, in that he had a very highly technical hardware background, and then he also got his doctor in instructional technology, and that's a rarity. And as a result of that, the district was able to build, you know, really the job description around that, and Mr. Chamberlain, with his expertise in such a way. This really, comparing to not only our surrounding districts, but like-sized districts, this is more in line to what is happening, where there is a Director of Technology that deals with the hardware, the informational systems, the nuts and bolts, which I notice Chamberlain is quite familiar with and has, and then you have the person that's executing curriculum integration and technology. And they work hand in hand, because they do overlap, but I do think the big thing is, is we've moved into this other position, and they've named them different things, but they're basically a coordinator type level. So, I mean, again, I think it's, it is focused, but it's focused in a way that meets the needs, I think, of what we've talked about.
You know, I just want to make sure that we're meeting those needs as far as technological support for our staff and for our students to be able to access, have access to the internet, and, you know, maybe the savings, we are incurring some savings, but I, you know, those are things that I know you all will be looking at, and we've had some discussions on that, and I don't want to lose any focus on that, because while we are streamlining things, there's still a growing focus on technology, and I don't think we're going to lose that, but we need to continue to focus on that.
Yeah, the cost savings was not the driving factor in the job changes.
Right, right.
The factor was, and we functioned at one time as one department, but we know, unfortunately, we don't have the resources to staff the technology like it needs to be staffed.
Right.
So, with minimal resources, we need to combine those two different departments that are there now, try to maximize what people we do have, so we're able to provide better support to the schools. So, that's the whole intent, is to provide better support by trying to maximize the few staff that we do have in that department. And as a result, we still may come back and add some staff to that. We still need some, you know, network security is still a big concern. So, we, there's still a chance, if we can figure it out in the budget, that we'll come back for next year and try to add some staff in those areas.
And I know, like, Dr. Gettys, this year, he took one of his technology persons, they had been needing a network person, we had one network person, we have one of the, we led, and again, I just credit this, this district, when it came to the race to the top money, while a lot of people were buying hardware, we put our investment into infrastructure. And that infrastructural base of wireless infrastructure made a huge difference than when we received other funds and being able to maximize that. But we had one guy up until this last year that did everything. He's an amazing guy. But Lance couldn't do it alone, and Dr. Gettys, you know, had to massage his resources to do that, and say, okay, if I, if I release something here, and I don't want to do it, but if I do, we can put another guy to help with that infrastructure, and those are exactly the needs, Mr. Dodd, you're talking about, is making sure that we affect those network needs, because networks no longer, we do have some hardware, and we do have, you know, some systems, but a lot of it's cloud-based, a lot of it is network-based, and so we're, you're constantly shuffling that, those people around to do the jobs. So, I think this will, will help do that, accomplish those goals a lot better. And I think they'll be working, this particular position will be working a lot with your division.
So, when do you, when do you post this position, do interviews for this?
Coordinated?
Yes.
It'll be posted as soon as the board approves it.
As soon as you're approved. As soon as you're approved, and then Suzie will get with Mr. Chamberlain, because it'll report to him, and he will then post the position and move forward from there.
Dozens of people are waiting to hit a sentence.
Yes, they are.
And you did take great effort trying to broaden, I think, to hopefully have opportunity for people to say, listen, we're looking for the best people in this position.
All right, is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes, five to the room.
Next item is, I ask approval of the additional wording to performance responsibilities. This wording would go on all job descriptions that we currently have, and the wording is perform job responsibilities with sustained focus and attention to detail for extended periods of time.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the additional wording to performance responsibilities on current job descriptions to add perform job responsibilities with sustained focus and attention to detail for extended periods of time.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'm not...
Okay, first by Ms. Council, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the additional wording on performance responsibilities on all current job descriptions. All right, we're open for discussion. Ms. Council.
No, go ahead, you might ask my question. I was just wondering why those words were needed to be put in here. Was there a problem before?
There have been some concerns, and this was a recommendation from Mr. Bradshaw, that we add this language to all job descriptions.
And why did he feel the need to do that?
He's right there.
Just had, first of all, that should be something that every person who works for the district does anyhow.
Exactly.
But we also have situations that occur with, kind of thing, the right way of putting it.
Spin down.
Bluntly, that we have people who do not perform, and are either under the influence of something, and it might be meditation, it might be some other things, and, you know, it needs to have an impact, they're having impacts on children that are in the classroom, and we need to have a remedy to be able to take care of those situations.
Okay, so is it the word extended, that we can challenge somebody that's not doing that job every day?
Correct.
Okay. And extended, does it have a legal definition? I mean, you should, everybody should be doing their job every day, they're going to work.
It doesn't have an, extended doesn't have a legal definition as far as, is there a legal? Does the word extended mean something law, different than what it does in the norm? But I would just have situations that occur.
If we have job descriptions, they should be doing that job description every day.
Correct.
Right, every day as opposed to an extended period of time, that was my concern.
All day long.
Yeah, we would expect, we would expect everybody to be doing their job description every day, their employee.
Correct. I agree with you, but it's becoming an issue on certain occasions, because a lot of people are, or I've talked to the superintendent to staff, but I don't have a particular language in there.
That is correct. It would give us more teeth to discipline somebody that's not doing their job every day.
Well, it's not so much that they're not doing it, yes, yes, to be in a nutshell, yes.
Okay.
Two periods, and they're not doing their job for the rest of the time.
That is correct.
Right, no problem. I make the motion.
And extended periods of time, still followed in the day, you're not saying anything beyond.
Sure, there are times where people, you know, take a break and are just maybe not being, you know, there's a lot of different things that occur, you've got distant families, you have some emotional issues, or doing whatever, and obviously those things don't count in the extended period. But you have things that occur day after day, or all day long, all the time, and so...
I swear, God, it's...
Yeah, it'd be a reason.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five to the room.
Have a good afternoon.
Okay, we're on to item number five, Attorney Legal Matters, Mr. Bradshaw.
Yeah, I want to, I know you asked me to send an email out, but it's easier for me to discuss the start time for WTC, for the Technical College, and because it got a little more involved. What you have is you have a statute that says that regular schools start on August 10th, that's 1,001.424F. When you get down, when you get down to 1,001.4226, talking about technical centers, and in technical centers, it doesn't actually give a start date, it says that, you know, you're supposed to meet the needs of local businesses, and things like that. So there's really no other start date time in the education code except for that, so I, my phone, telephone is more than part of the education, it's both the public and our terms up there, and we're fine with having WTC start sooner than August 10th. The reason for the August 10th date was because districts kept moving the start time sooner and sooner because of state testing, and so they want to put a, you know, they dropped that date as far as the earliest you can start, you know, to try to get class days in before the state testing. But because the WTC is not like a regular school, where you have classes that start at different times throughout the year for different things, they're not, you don't have to comply with the August 10th. Although, our wills, you know, we do need to be cognizant that we have high school students that go to school over there for classes, and so you can't make them start, you know, that's what they're doing.
And when you were on the phone with them, did you discuss, perhaps, they say the second Monday of August, rather than a day?
Did I discuss with the attorneys from the Florida Department of Education?
No, with the Florida Department of Education, did you suggest that to them?
Would you like for me to make another phone call?
Yes, oh, yes. The calendar committee would like to...
But being that your legislators set that in prior.
Yeah.
Because Disney World and the big boys with the big money pockets do not want to lose their workforce in the summer. Now, the legislators know more about starting school than you all do, that's the...
Well, it's just that, like, when I was on the calendar committee this year, they said, well, September 10th next year is on Saturday, so we're going to start school on Saturday. But it's a movable date when you do a number, if you do the second Tuesday of the month or the third Tuesday of the month.
That's the way it used to be, wasn't it?
Yes. Yeah, and then they gave us a latitude, because we were an A-plus district to open early, but the idea that they pick a number date is absolutely ludicrous. And I would like to start the school next year on Saturday.
I agree.
And show them. Is that a vote? No.
That won't be the worst thing ever, this thing.
We may be wishing that is the, that's the worst.
We can start it off.
That's all I have, I think.
Thank you, Secretary.
I agree, Ms. Council.
Okay, Mr. Mullen.
Yes, I asked Ms. Wilson to come for the budget calendar and give you a quick update. There's not a lot that we can tell you yet, but I think it's important to keep you on the loop.
Good morning. I do have paper copies, if anybody would like.
Sure.
My name is Mullen.
He does not.
That's okay.
He has an allergy.
I have one tree in the forest, I'm saving.
The big one.
That's right.
I have the rest of you. We weren't sure we were going to be able to make it, because what Dr. Gettys got here.
Okay. Let me fill my PowerPoint here. Yes, I will send this to you also. I was just updating it.
I always can count on you. You're always there.
I try. Okay, so our current general fund budget situation, our FTE went up about 50, our weighted FTE went up 61.76. This is from the second to the third calculation. This increased our revenue by $571,295, but McKay Scholarship was 91 FTE, so that was reduced by $506,621. So the third calculation increased our revenue by $61,988. All right. Our current budget situation, human capital continues to remain an issue. We need teachers, we need bus drivers, food service, other support, we need subs. So right now, we have 27 teaching positions open throughout the district, goes through all levels that we need these teachers, and 80% of our general fund budget is salary and fringe benefits. All right. Here's a forecast that, we did present this to the district administrators and the principals last week, just so you know, they were getting the same information as we're preparing for budget next year. We're projecting a, about a million dollar to the good this year, that we should be bringing about a million dollars more in revenue than we're spending. That is currently at this time, based on all the expenses that were hit as of January. This would bring our fund balance at the end of this fiscal year to 5.02%.
From your mouth to God's ears.
Yes. So just to reiterate, our policy that fund balance unreserved and adequate unreserved fund balance is necessary to cover unforeseen events, including but not limited to revenue shortfalls and student enrollment under projections. The adopted annual operating fund budget approved by the school board shall include, if feasible, a fund balance unreserved, which is at least 3.5% of the reoccurring revenues budget. Just reiterating that, I know you guys all know how to read.
Like, or to be four.
Four.
Four percent.
5.02 is even better.
It certainly is.
All right, so...
Drop to four, it's all the same.
I just threw some graphical depictions in here for you of revenues versus expenditures. As you can see in the middle, we, our expenditures way, were much higher than our revenues during those years, but because we had such a nice fund balance, we were able to make it through those years without going into financial distress. And here we have a depiction of our fund balance versus our unrestricted. And you'll notice the one year where the blue line, which is our unrestricted, dropped significantly, that's the year that they changed the classification of our, what we had to restrict, what we had to reserve, what we, all those different classifications. So, as you can tell, we are projecting it's going to be going up a little, we would like to keep going in that direction. Be nice to get back to the levels of 2010 eventually. All right, so what's going on in the legislature? We're in our final two weeks, this is the eighth week. The important issues pending now are student safety and school security. The governor, the House, and the Senate have all made proposals. Revenues need to be pumped into these safety initiatives, and the governor has stated he's willing to give up some of his tax cuts to deliver these safety initiatives. We haven't seen any legislative allocation, so we don't know where the funding for the proposals will come yet. So this is, as of this morning, this is the news that I could pull down for you. Budget negotiations have not started, they were supposed to start last week, it kind of got stalled because of safety and security. It has been, Corcoran did say we may have to have a special session, we've heard we may have to extend the session. It's an $87 billion plan from both chambers, they're not far off, they're about $100 million, which seems like a lot, but statewide, it's really not for them to be off that much from each other. So hopefully they'll have a speedy resolution, and of course, this was all before student security and school safety came into play.
I want to add something. You know, they need to pass this before next week, because there's a three-day wait for the governor, and then they have to pass it, and then they have to wait, so hopefully by this third, people see some final numbers come through.
And I don't know if you're going to talk about this, but one of the biggest challenges, and I largely am supportive of the governor's initiatives on safety and security, but there is one small comment that he said that could have dramatic impacts to our district, and financially, and that is the expectation that we would use all capital dollars to meet, and we can talk about this more, I know, later, but to meet safety and security initiatives of which are yet to be defined, but they're saying we're to have to use all of that and implement it by the beginning of the fall season. But that would mean, and I guess my question is, is are we even at the district level recognizing the broad impact that could have? Because, I mean, when I hear using all capital, I don't just hear technology, which yes, I do, but what I also hear is mans, because we have a lot of labor that is capital dollars. We have a lot of, you know, we have multiple initiatives that are in play, ready to go, and if they say, you don't do that, do we lay off people? Do we, where is that going?
That's broadened scope. I think at this point in time, we're very eagerly waiting to find out what the final picture looks like. The governor's proposal has that caveat in it, the other two seem to be much more loose in terms of funding expectations, but it is, it's huge from a human resource standpoint. We pay a significant number of employees' salaries out of our capital fund, technology comes out of capital, fixing air conditioning comes out of capital. If the governor's proposal was to be the final draft that was approved by everyone, it would have a tremendously large impact on our school district. We have been in contact with the state, trying to find out, you know, what are the guidelines for hardening? The governor's proposal specifically says, don't spend, can't spend any capital funds until their schools are defined to be hardened. What are the parameters by which he defines hardened?
That's one of my biggest questions that is not being defined.
Right. And there's a lot of unknowns that still, that's one, that's one of the three proposals, so I don't want us to spend too much energy on it, it's good to be aware of it, but realistically...
If the governor's going to call a special session, which is being talked about, and we right now have dollars that are allocated, it's serious. So if we're not preparing behind the scenes, I think that we are, we are going to put ourselves and our district into some serious challenges. So I hope we are planning.
And Mr. Kennedy, remember when we toured Renaissance, they were talking about hardening at that building, and they gave us, you know, money it took, and when I saw hardening in the legislature's language, I thought, oh, my gosh.
Right.
They say harden every building. There is no...
Well, that's the budget. I mean, and that will cover it.
Yeah, we certainly, we certainly don't want to jump the gun, but we want to be cognizant of that there is that language out there, we want to be mindful of that. But there are different standards by which we harden, you know, our current schools, some of our current schools are hardened to withstand wind, to withstand storms. That's a different context than the word hardened, as opposed to what we're talking about in terms of student safety in light of the recent track in South Florida.
We need the definition.
But I do think that we need to keep our eye on that, but yet have a plan, and try to develop some plan, because certainly, there'll be a lot of conversations, and the final proposal probably be much different than, the final product will be much different than what's apparently proposed, I can imagine.
And there's a lot of conversation when we were in our meetings in Tallahassee about what is a hardened school. And you're right, they talked about the hurricanes, they talked about safety, they also talked about recommendations from DOE as in putting in minimums. So lots of discussion, but more unknown than discussion, so we're just waiting to see, not waiting, we're watching to see how they implement it.
I know Florida School Board Association, I'm sure some of you can watch the video, they're saying we better be having these conversations right now with our staff, because we've got to know where you're going to be going with it.
Once the governor submitted his proposal, released it on Friday, I immediately began meeting with my staff, that would be, I want that to be most effective.
Thank you.
All right. The statewide impact of the budgets that have been proposed, we're looking at an increase of the unweighted FTE of about 30,340.68, or 1.08%. The funds for unweighted FTE, you can see I put in the differences between the governor, the Senate, the House being the lowest, almost half of what the governor is proposing. The millage and the required local effort, the Senate and governor would like to increase that for us, and the House wants to decrease that, which means that even though our property values would go up, they're looking to decrease our millage so that we don't actually receive more funding, even though our property values are increasing. The base student allocation, on the other hand, the House and the governor are looking to increase that, the Senate is looking to decrease that. Yes, House and governor increasing, Senate decreasing, so everybody's kind of all over the place, nobody's in sync on one... So, everybody's kind of all over the place, nobody's in sync on one issue or the other. And then safe schools, when I put this together, this was before all this was going on, the senator and governor were looking to increase, and the house was looking to decrease, which that is, of course, drastically changed and is just a moving target right now.
Tammy, on the... If you just wait the slide before, you just... Or you can just... You said, and this was, and I know this to be correct, too, the base student allocation is decreased under the senate, but increased under the house. But if I recall, looking at our final dollars, the senate's package for us gives us a slight amount more than the house. Not a lot, but I think it is a little more, exactly.
Yes. And that was statewide. The previous slide that I just had up was statewide. So, now I'm going to go into the specifics of our county.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I was... I thought the safe school funding in the house was constant. Did they actually increase it? I mean, I had the senate and the governor's budget up, and when we looked at Mr. Bullen, but I thought the house was...
It was pretty stagnant. It was... Yeah, I think they were just looking to keep it the same, and I misspoke there then.
Okay. And I know everything's changed since our...
Everything's changed.
Since we're in our county, but...
Alright, so, the next slide is just showing a comparison of the three. And like I already spoke, the millage is looking to... The differences in the millage, the house is bringing it down. The senate's bringing down the base student allocation over the third calculation, which is the first column. Okay? And the governor, when he puts out his budget, he puts it out so early that the projected FTE numbers aren't out, so that's why his unweighted FTE and weighted FTE are higher than the house and senate, because he puts us out before we actually send up our projections. So, here's just line item by line item, and if you look, they're not too far off from each other. If you look at the bottom number, the senate's just categorizing more of our funds and restricting more of our funds and what we actually can do, that we have the freedom to do with what we need to. If you look at the senate, the base student allocation, base funding ends up being almost 63,900,000, whereas the governor's 67,167,000, the house's 65,751. So, quite a difference in our base funding, which we have more freedom to make choices of how we use that. So, to bring it all together, we're looking at the... If you look at the very bottom where the local funding is, you'll see the differences between the governor and the senate. The required local effort's the same, whereas the house, even though our property values are going up, you know, they're giving us about $2 million less in tax dollars. Any questions? Our FTE projection is up slightly. You can see we had a little downturn in '13, '14, and '14, '15, and we're heading back up. So, as we look forward, our issues, of course, number one is school safety and mental health of students. We have negotiated salary increases we have to budget for. We have a one-time market increase for the instructional staff. We're on... We will be on year two of the three-year plan next year. Technology, health insurance, FRS increase, and the FRS increase is not as drastic as it has been previously for the higher-risk state employees. It is going up quite a bit, but we don't fall into that category, just so you're aware. Staffing is always an issue. Our open enrollment for our students so they can have the school choice, and then our reduction in title grants. So, as we prepare, we want to maintain our unrestricted fund balance, and we want to work on a zero-base budgeting. We presented this to the district administrators and principals that started at the bottom and worked up, and we need to look at where our money is going at the end of this year, what we have left, what we need to spend, do we need to use all of our budget, where can we tighten our belts the rest of this year? And I just put in the budget calendar again. Our next steps will be the district and school administrators will be working on their budgets for the next month. Staffing will happen, and then the executive team and myself and Ms. Swain and Mr. Baumer will start meeting with the district administrators on their budget and going over that with them. And we'll come back to you next... The next board workshop in April, that we'll be bringing more budget information to you. Continuing of the budget calendar.
Could you go back one slide, please? I just want to see that.
This just rounds out the end, where the property appraiser brings in... They give us our actual tax values, and the department of ed computes the required local effort. We have to adopt the tentative budget. We keep entering budget for human resources. The DOE will get us our final funding figures. We will advertise the budget, vote on the budget, and then we'll submit it to the state. And then we have to submit our term notices and all that stuff to the property appraisers and the tax collector.
And, you know, at the last board meeting, maybe the previous one, you know, just to remind the board that we do have that July 31st meeting to adopt the tentative budget, which is actually the fifth Tuesday of July, so...
Gives us one extra week to prepare and have more accurate numbers.
Advertise and get it.
Yes. Thank you for reminding me of that. And the capital budget, we really don't know what's going to happen right now, based on the governor and the senate and the house, so it's really nothing to present at this time. Crystal ball.
Stay tuned.
Alright. Any more questions? You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Well, after we got back from Tallahassee, I had a few other things. SAECs, and that's what... The African-American reading was quite nice. Ms. Keltz and I were there, and quite a great group of children performed. They were awesome. And that's it.
Scotty, Scotts.
I just wanted to reiterate something I mentioned earlier, is I've only had to do these Renaissance, and being very impressed with the programs that they have, a student who came up and talked about what she was learning and not learning, and she even gave an input about, you know, what worked there and what didn't work for her, and you said that, well, you're seeing this from her point of view, because she is a Renaissance, she is one of the students. And she was saying, yeah, that works really well. No, that doesn't. And the teachers chimed in and agreed with her about most of the things she presented. So, I think the Renaissance, though, are serving them. They're doing a pretty good job.
Good.
Well, I did go to the African-American reading, and we all would have been very proud of Mrs. Blatch, she was one of the best readers there.
I can read.
She told a beautiful story between an eagle who dropped out of its nest, and now it was a chicken. And it was a cute story, and it reminded me that I used to always have something in the classroom that's hard to store, like anything from the library. But I did that, and then I've been to my staff's meetings, too, and one mother at one of the schools said that she thought there were cameras available now that could process a driver's license outside of the door. So, that might be one of the things we bring up as we talk about school safety. And then the other one is they're all looking at their parent questionnaires right now to look for more data for their improvement plans. And concern seems to be that, you know, just like our voters only go up 28, 32% in this county, that they're only getting about 30% of their parent tax.
Because they don't drive them.
Yeah, and they're talking about emailing them, they're talking about handling, they're talking about recording kids, but just disturbing that lack of interest that the parents will take a few minutes to answer those questions.
You give ice cream to those kids when their parents return it. You'll see a better return.
Well, they talked about rewards and saying, maybe even ice cream at one of the schools.
Maybe cookies, I don't know.
But I don't know, if we can do anything to help our schools get this improvement plan, you know, more solidified and active. I don't think the questions are difficult to answer, but I'm concerned that they don't care, or do they...
Well, they're busy, okay? They're busy.
But they're not.
Scott, are they still required under Title I for the surveys as well? Are the surveys still part of Title I?
Yes, they're still part of it. Our elementary and middle school are Title I.
So, they are also... They have to do that?
Surveys, yes.
Yeah. And they do them.
Really, bribing was... Well, Mr. Hebert, he was an expert at running classroom competitions to get...
Yeah, well, see, now, alright.
Yeah, classroom competitions were always big.
Okay.
I'm good. I'm good, you go.
Okay, well, it was great turnout at the Purple Heart Ceremony, and we were all there, and that was a nice event, as usual. I was at the Homosassa River Guides Association Fish Fry, and they were raising money for our students for scholarships, and so that was a nice event over at Homosassa, and those guides are very generous, you know, when they come out, but that fifth grade program at Homosassa Elementary School is really neat, so kudos to them. And then we have a letter from FFA, from the young lady at Citrus High School, where she sent some pins, some buttons, somewhere. She said that I support FFA, and we all love our ag programs. And she wrote a letter, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but there was some interesting little parts. Her name's Hannah Carpenter, she's a student at Citrus High, a member of the Citrus High Senior FFA Chapter. She wanted to invite us to her steer auction taking place at the Fairgrounds on March 30th at 7:00 PM, and it said here that she has a steer, and she's so happy that she's able to have the steer at school and raise it as the FFA Chapter steer, but she named her steer Saban, and that's after the great University of Alabama's head coach. So, that's why she named him Saban, but she said if you prefer the spear or the chomp, come with... You can see those steers, too, so I guess there must be some other steers, the spear, the chomp, or Florida State University of Florida. But anyway, she wanted to give those pins out to support FFA, and says, please wear me during fair week to show your support of the 4H and FFA youth. So, we appreciate it.
Putting out a war eagle, just for...
Was there a war eagle? That's a new question, I don't know if I've heard that steer's name, but obviously, we do have the Citrus County Fair coming up the week of our spring break, and that's all I have. Okay, is there any other business that needs to come before the board? Seeing none, I will adjourn this special meeting. We just... We're going to get into our workshop, but board, we've been at it a little over an hour. I would prefer to continue right now to take a break around 11:30, but if you all would like to take a break now, we can do that.
At least the PACE, because they've been so patient, so awesome.
So, our first item of our workshop is, A, the PACE School presentation. Mr. Hebert.
Mr. Hebert, before you go, I want to apologize to all of the PACE participants today. If I had been thinking this morning, I would have recessed, I asked the chairman to recess the workshop, because you all have come from Jacksonville and other areas, and I would have put our staff second, because they're here all day. So, I apologize for not thinking about that. We've asked them to come today, and Mr. Hebert will go into a little more detail, but I was approached by Senator Simpson that this is a program. I believe there are 20 other PACE schools throughout the state, and now that he's got Citrus County as part of his district, he wants us to look into the program. We have asked for funding, so a lot of this will be based on how powerful he is in Tallahassee. So, with that, I will turn over to Mr. Hebert, and he can give you a heads up in what we've done so far.
So, good morning. We did meet with PACE School virtually. Our executive and services team met and gathered some information. Last year, I believe, we had some of our staff that went to Pasco County to actually go and observe one of the schools, so this has not been just a new idea. This has been kind of looked at last year, and then this year, we decided through leadership of Mrs. Himmel to kind of continue to see, move forward where we want to go. So, we've asked PACE to come, we've done kind of a look at our area and our site, and so I'm going to turn it over at this point. We have a PowerPoint presentation to share with you, which I believe you all should have received to Carol Savage, and she'll introduce her team and go through that with you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having us this morning. I'm Carol Savage, I am the East Central Regional Executive Director for PACE, and what that means is that I oversee several centers throughout the state of Florida, one of them hopefully being in the Citrus area. The rest of the team joining me today is our COO, Yesma Cancel, our Chief Business Officer, Teresa Giles, and two of our PACE girls from PACE Marion. I have Kylie and Giselle, and they're going to talk to us in just a few minutes. My home base, so to speak, is over in Ocala, so I'm right next door in the same judicial district as Citrus County, and I actually grew up in Sumter, so very, very familiar with this area. We spent many happy hours over on the coastline and enjoyed that. So, a little bit like old home week, so thank you for having us here this morning. For a little bit of a program overview, our program did begin a little over 30 years ago in Jacksonville, so we were founded in 1985. We are a nationally recognized research-based program. I heard the term data-driven used earlier this morning at the school board meeting, and I respect that. We also, in turn, are a data-driven organization and are very thoughtful in our strategic plans and such, using that data. We advocate for causes, policies, and issues affecting women and girls in society. We are, as we mentioned earlier, a statewide network with 20 centers throughout Florida, and we are looking at developing partnerships for expansion to other states. We have actually been asked and sought out by other state governments, organizations to come and expand to those areas, but like anything at PACE, we take our time. Again, we're strategic, we're thoughtful, and we are looking forward to some expansions in the next couple of years. One thing that's not on the PowerPoint is our founder was named Vicki Burke. She worked for the... Worked with the Department of Juvenile Justice, and we recognized early on that girls respond to things differently than boys do, and that's why the whole organization was developed from the beginning. And for those of you who do travel to the state capital, there is a Florida Women's Hall of Fame in one of the small corners of our capital, and she is listed in the Women's Hall of Fame because of her work in founding PACE. So, who are some of the girls that we serve? We wanted to take an example of a center that might be close to the Citrus County area that would also somewhat look like Citrus. So, we're looking at PACE Pasco, and you can see that our girls are victims of trauma. And the numbers here pretty much line up with many of our centers across the state of Florida. You can see 35% have been sexually abused, 32% physically abused, 68 with parents civilly in prison or on probation. We have girls who come from homes with parents with mental illnesses, and a vast majority of them have lived in the home with domestic violence. So, what does that mean? What that means is that we begin to see self-destructive behaviors from these girls. We all probably recognize that the behaviors are not the problems. They may create other problems, the behaviors are not the problems, the behaviors are the result of problems. So, 41% of the girls in Pasco specifically have been expelled or suspended. I know those are statistics that you're familiar with in terms of looking at your own district. 70% have failed one or more classes in the last six months, so we obviously have some academic challenges there because of other situations taking place in their life. 63% cutting or self-mutilating, 29% attempted suicide, 15 arrested prior to coming to PACE. So, again, those are specific to Pasco, but if you look at our centers throughout the state of Florida, you'll see some very similar types of statistics. So, our day program, which is a year-round program, Monday through Friday, is comprised of two main aspects. We have very... Many different aspects that are very diverse, but the two main ones would be the educational and the counseling, because we recognize with our girls, we do need both strong components to make them whole. So, our education is our academic side. Obviously, we're working with Florida certified teachers. Then we have our counseling side. When we say counseling, it's not quite the guidance counseling that you sometimes see in looking at test grades, because while we do incorporate that academic side, it is really more of the behavioral types of counseling, because we recognize they have to have both of those pieces to make them, again, whole. Our girls are sixth through 12th grades, their age is 11 through 17. If we have somebody who is age 11, because I have been asked about that, that's often in the elementary age, we don't serve elementary, so if a girl's 11, she will have to be in the sixth grade and completing there. We are non-residential, so again, we're a day program, Monday through Friday. It is free for our girls. It is free for our girls. Most of them can't afford the services that we provide and that's okay, because we're not there to charge, we're there to offer the services. And it is a voluntary program, it is non-mandated and to me, that's a very important component. Our girls choose to come to our school. They have that choice. We are considered an alternative education and juvenile justice prevention program. So it's kind of prevention and intervention. In our day program, again, looking over at the Pasco area, we typically start with at least 50 girls in a center, so looking at 50 girls, again, going year-round, so we're fall, spring, and summer. We have psychoeducational classes, we're looking at communicating with girls, helping them to communicate, how do they problem solve, as well as our academic groups. They have volunteer engagement activities, so we believe firmly that our girls should participate in the communities in which they reside and instill that sense of community and pride in them and so we offer that on a regular basis. We have a transition program, so we do provide services for our girls for at least a year once they have transitioned from our program. And the target length of stay is 15 to 18 months. We also have other programs called REACH in some of our centers. Not all of our 20 centers currently have the REACH program. We are looking at incorporating it into all of the centers in a larger strategic plan, but at the moment, it's about half of our centers. And this is a therapeutic mental health component, it's delivered through partnerships with schools, so this looks a little different than our day program. This could be where some of our counselors are going into schools and working with girls there. It could be a site that is selected where girls can come to them, perhaps during the day or after hours, but it's another aspect, another arm to help reach girls who need the services that we provide. And through that, we do have needs assessments, we work with them on goal planning, we have individual group and family counseling, because again, another important component is we recognize that families are very, very important in the terms of being successful with a girl. Our day and REACH programs are called gender responsive. We are providing girls with a safe environment to heal from trauma. So we recognize, again, going back to our REACH with Vicki Burke, girls respond to things differently than boys do. That is part of what makes us what we are. We are trauma-informed. All of our staff have been through training, they understand, they recognize, and they respond to girls with trauma, because remember, going back to girls' problems, that appear to be problems are actually the result of problems, their behaviors are not really their problems, they're the result again. So, understanding that is an important component and we are strength-based, so we leverage a girl's strengths to develop her areas of growth. We look at the positive with them, they all have great potential, they all have positive aspects, we know that, so we reach out to them to pull that and help them believe it as well and move forward with them. On our day program academics, we do have IP's with the girls and we do their goals with them. We have individual weekly counseling with them. We have small classes, it's average 10 girls, we can go up to 14 girls, but that would be the maximum number, ratio of 1 to 14 within the classroom. We have after-school tutoring, again, all of our services are free, so that's not something they have to expend dollars for. We have daily study halls with our girls to help them continue to catch up at the areas that they need to. All of again, I mentioned earlier, all of our teachers are certified in that sixth through 12th grade, because that is the academic area we serve. And our curriculum standards match DOE requirements and we also work with local districts. Every district's a little different, other requirements, but we adhere and work with those districts on an individual level.
Yes, how long a day is, what are the hours?
Typically, a day will run anywhere from 8 to 8:30-ish and it will go to 2:45, 3 o'clock. So it's very much similar to a traditional public school day. So as I mentioned earlier, all of our teachers are certified in their core subject areas, so all of those DOE design requirements that you have to watch out for and keep track of and see on top of, we do the same, because we are in partnership with our school districts, so we are mirroring that as well. We adopt the learning styles of our girls, we recognize that our girls do have different, and probably all you are familiar with it, some are dynamic learners, some are visual learners, or auditory learners. We recognize that because of our class size and the way we're structured, we're able to meet those needs at a high level. And we encourage creativity with our girls so that they can help reach their highest academic potential. We offer instructional support and advisors in developing, communicating, modifying goals and that is an ongoing, so for many of us in life, that's an ongoing thing, our goals change and grow and evolve. And with our girls, it's the same thing, we're just starting at a little bit earlier, younger level.
Question, you might have said this, then I might have missed it. Age, how early?
11.
Thank you.
So on our day program, on the counseling side, we do work with the girls on their individual counseling goals. Just like their academic goals are very important, so are their other counseling goals. And in fact, again, going back to behaviors and problems, that is a huge, huge component with our girls. So we work with them on setting goals, understanding their issues, setting goals to overcome them. We use the word coping or the phrase coping skills quite a lot in our centers. We offer individual counseling sessions, that's a very important component. Our girls have a schedule where they know they will always be able to meet with their counselor, have a session, and in the between time of those scheduled sessions, they are also able to access those counselors if they need that. And that, as you can imagine, with our girls, happens quite a lot. We have group sessions, again, bringing in that family component, because we know that is such an important part of this. So the family counseling, peer meditation, or mediations rather, where they work with each other, substance abuse counseling, we have access to our counseling staff, as I said earlier. We also have 24-hour emergency phone, also very important, because some of the lifestyles, if you look back at the beginning where we showed some of the trauma factors, these girls live in some high-stress situations and when we walk out of our doors, sometimes it's a tough road they're walking down. Our counselors are available anytime, it doesn't matter if it's the weekend, if it's a holiday, at night, in the middle of the morning, it doesn't matter, a girl can reach a counselor by using our emergency phone. That is available every single day of the year, 24 hours a day.
Can you provide this to us, because these are great services? I could use every one of these.
You're not a girl.
Never mind.
Hell, it'd be the only thing.
It's this close.
So close, it's a friend. We do have monthly parent meetings, again, as I mentioned two or three times, the parent aspect is extremely important and we have master's level and licensed counselors, so we are providing them with the counselors who have the training and the education needed to address the issues that we're talking about. And looking at our Pasco program, what are some of the outcomes? That's always an important question. In the Pasco program alone, over 120 girls in the day program and 15 in the REACH program per year. 93% of girls have known of vomit with criminal justice system within one year of leaving Pace. We're very proud of that. And 90% of our girls improved academically while at Pace, that's another statistic we're very proud of. 89% of the girls graduated from high school or were back in school, higher education, or employed after leaving Pace, because we recognize some of them are going to go right into the job market and we need to help prepare them for that. I heard some discussion about that earlier as well, so it's a problem and an issue and a challenge we all work with and face with working with students. So, ladies, I'm going to ask you if you will come forward. So we love our statistics and we love our statistics because, again, we are data-driven and because we know that they bear out and show what we are trying to accomplish is being accomplished, but we never get so tied up in numbers that we forget what those numbers and who those numbers represent, because we're here for the girls, we're here for the students just like you are. And so ladies, I'm going to ask you if you would, just by my margin for us, and then if you would tell a little bit about yourselves and your story.
Pace values all girls and young women, believing each one deserves an opportunity to find her voice, achieve her potential, celebrate a life defined by responsibility, dignity, serenity, and race. Hi, my name is Giselle Bustos. I've been attending Pace for, it will be the year in June. Prior to coming to Pace, I dealt with law, trauma within my life, domestic abuse, sexual abuse, and more. Within my first year of high school, I was sexually abused by a senior, so that affected me a lot. I didn't feel safe in an environment I should have been, so my grades dropped, I failed algebra and I just didn't feel I belonged in. I moved to Ocala and I wasn't really excited to start school again, but my mom introduced me to Pace. Pace really helped me a lot, you know, before Pace, I hated being a female, but it changed the game for me. I have completed 10th grade English, 10th grade science, we'll be starting 11th grade science in a week. I am one semester away from completing, finishing social studies and I'm in 10th grade.
Hi, I'm Kylie. I came to Pace because when I was, I was adopted when I was three and, because I'd always used to see abuse with my real parents, so they'd always be in jail in and out, so I'd be in people's random houses getting, well, she'd call it babysitting, but it'd just be a random person she just met. So I'd be with people I didn't know or I'd just see a lot of abuse. So when I was adopted, as I grew up, I didn't really get along with the woman I'm with now or the parents, because I honestly didn't care, like whatever I did, I knew it would be a wrong choice, but what I've seen in the past, I just, it didn't, I didn't, I wouldn't think about what I was doing. So in public school, I'd always get Fs and Ds, I never got higher than that. I'd always be in ISS, I'd always be in trouble. And so when I came to Pace, it taught me how to appreciate what I have and to not care what anybody thinks, because taking your time and not doing, if you're doing something bad, it's not going to get you anywhere, because if you don't want to do this and you don't want to do that, you're still going to have to do it in order to graduate or else you're going to take longer to do it, you have to do it one way or another, so, yeah.
I have a question, did you, did you get your algebra, the first girl?
Oh, yeah, I did. I really feel that Pace is a safe haven, honestly, they really value mental health and that's not, not a lot of regular schools do. And alternative schools doesn't necessarily mean you're bad, just means, you know, you need a focus on a certain area than other schools can provide.
Those are the voices of trauma and those are the voices of triumph and success on its way. So my team and I will now answer any questions that you have.
How much money will it cost to get one here?
Chief Business Officer?
Yes.
So we've asked the Senator for the 1.4 million and the reason we asked for that is because we looked at the dynamics in any county. So our financial structure is usually, we get about 65, 70% from the state, that means from Department of Juvenile Justice as well as Department of Education or contract with the school board. The other percent of the other amount of money usually comes from fundraising and donations. So when we looked at the area, we thought that it would, might be a struggle that first couple of years. So the Senator, that really wanted in our area, we said, you got to give us that life of asking for the 1.4 upfront, so we can bring it to the county and then as we build the reputation in Citrus County, well, we can actually go out and do a little bit more fundraising. So right now, we've asked for 1.4 million at the state level.
As for an opening day, if everything comes through, we get the money from the state, Mr. Hebert and Mr. Rowland took this group over to WTI today to look at building 700 that we might think that that might be a good fit for them to start with. We haven't met back with them yet, but we will. The earliest opening day would be January of 2019?
Yes.
19, because even if they get a...
We're in 18.
I'm just saying. Well, I'm just saying, 20 too, but because even if the funding comes through, it would be till July 1 and they would take several months to get your school open. And they would work with Student Services to identify somewhere girls, they would also look at girls who've already dropped out of school. So there's a whole gamut that we would look at to get this going.
That little girl we had this morning.
Could be a prime...
Could fit right in, yes.
We also discussed about some of the, the Pace taken away from the Renaissance. Mr. Rowland spoke to Mike out there and he works closely with you all in Mary County and he said it would be a great fit for Citrus County, that he has not seen a drop of his enrollment at the SERMI in Mary County since they have opened up Pace, because they really, I hate to say, they identify a different type of student. And their goal is to fix these girls before they end up with the Renaissance. So that's their thinking.
It's voluntary, but is there a behavior contract, say, the girl comes in and then doesn't follow through with your particular program that has the data to say that you're going to be successful with them? But what do you do with that child that maybe doesn't move along with your program?
So every center is just a little bit different about that, but I'm going to ask the girls. Giselle, will you come up and tell about that?
Well, we do have behavior contracts, there's other contracts, so if you are under one, you have certain rules you have to apply to and if you don't, then there'll be early transition and other things.
All right, so, does that give you the incentive to finish your algebra, because you know that there are consequences if you don't follow the rules with Pace?
Yeah, it's a big help if you have those issues.
Okay, so the attachment there is that you like yourself a lot better in this situation than you do in a public school situation where you have larger classes and a larger school population?
Exactly.
And then I have to ask the ultimate question, since we have 27 openings, where do you get your teachers and your counselors from?
That's a great question. And actually, I'm, okay. I will, I will give an introduction to it and say Pace is a very, very specific fit, so we do take our time in selecting teachers and counselors, so that they not only have to have the skill set that goes with it, they have to understand the philosophy of Pace and be a part of that whole movement. And so sometimes it takes a little bit of time, but in terms of a little bit more of the specifics, yes, you can probably answer that better than I can.
Sure, good morning. So I'm COO, but my background is actually in human resources and talent management. So, you know, we all know about the teacher shortage and Pace statewide is no different, but we are looking for a very specific skill set in teachers and part of the training that comes on board is, we can get somebody certified or they're coming in certified, but is, do they have the soft skills to be able to understand and work with our girls? And we jokingly, not jokingly, talk about our teachers having, they literally go through some counseling training and so they have ways that they can, within the classroom, work with our girls differently. And so what that means from attracting teachers, we do look nationally for teachers. Our pay scales, we use the school district as a base, but we're not on a step system, we're not on a tenure-based system, we are strictly on a merit increase. And so we have a statewide, we look at the local economy, because we don't want to disrupt the local pay rates, but we also will look at a premium, because we are asking for a different skill set for our teachers. Counseling, you know, that's actually a very popular major in school, there are a lot of counselors and on the counseling side, we tend, not going to look, because they don't want to jinx us, to not really have an issue, because in comparison to other counseling positions, Pace is a cushy job in the counseling world. We have smaller caseloads, so our counselors can really dedicate their time to getting to know their girls and spending time with the girls. They have a lot more resources than they would in other organizations. So, you know, from the counseling side, you know, we are able to truly get amazing counselors and we've got strategies in place for teachers and also retention. We don't just look at how do we bring them in, how do we train them and retain our teachers.
Do you work on a system of like SERMI, where you contract with us or are you part of a charter? And either way, by the way, it's okay.
Right.
We, I mean, I got to tell you, you guys are amazing. They're the ones though, that I think has, is oppressing, impressing us, so.
Absolutely. So we're not a charter school, so we're 1-5-on-1-C-3, even though we've got 20 locations, we're one organization. We do contract with all the individual school districts.
So then do, in that contract, is it similar to SERMI where we give a portion of our FTE then to you or all of the FTE or however that works out and then, and you provide then those services to do it?
And so the teachers and the counselors would still be part of, no, they hired them.
Correct, so they're not part of, correct, they're our employees.
Is the 1.4 million startup cost, is that an increased amount that's, or is that what you estimate the cost for a year would be or can you fill me in a...
Now, our budget for 50 girls, serving 50 girls, is about $1.4 million total, give or take. Our smallest centers are around the 1.2 and that's serving 48-ish girls. And then we've got some very large centers that are at the $4 million mark, serving 80 girls. 80 girls. But yeah, 1.4 is the total cost.
And so how has it worked in the other districts with funding and with what we might expect here past that first year?
And I, yeah, I'll have our Chief Business Officer talk to that, because no, we wouldn't ask the 1.4 million dollars for the school district.
No, what we ask, when we work with the school districts, we use the actual worksheet, and your director, finance, or your CFO might know that. So your educational worksheet. So we're looking for part of the FTE, and then there's the DJJ supplement, and then part of following the child, like maybe the instructional type of material. If some of our girls are SES, then we look at the weighted formula, but it's more working with the district to actually come up with that contract for what that looks like for 50 girls.
So is the DJJ formula what you get? Obviously, these girls aren't in the juvenile justice system, but you have a, a grant through DJJ, or is there appropriation?
There's an appropriation through DJJ, absolutely, yes.
One, the relationship with the parents. The parents tend to support you in whatever you do, or do you have issues?
Well, so, yes and yes. So when a girl initially comes, want intake, and when she's deciding, yes, this is where I want to be, we have the parent or the guardian sign paperwork that states they will be participatory with this girl's experience at PACE, and we have the monthly contacts. So from the very beginning, we set that expectation with them. Sometimes the parents need it, and sometimes they don't. But it is our job to then make sure that we're seeking them out in every avenue that we can. So our counselors are very adept at texting, they're very good at Facebooking, they're very good at calling, they're very good at going to a girl's house, and they make monthly visits where they visit a girl in her home. So we use a variety of communication methods to pull in the parent and make sure that they're a participant and a partner with us in the girl's experience.
And what is, what was your names?
Kylie.
Kylie. Okay, go. Something you said, I've been reading, I'm getting the last four days, a few hundred pages, on the area of psychology, in the area of psychology, and that's my background, so I wanted to do some updating and stuff. And you said, the student, the girl, needs to learn to appreciate what you have. And all those books, that was the bottom line of it. And all the other theories, but the bottom line was, if you can do this, then you're well on your way, appreciate what you have. So I was very pleased, Calvin, when you said that, I thought, she really knows, she's learned. I should have asked her. The girls get it. The girls do.
I have two questions too. WTC 700 building, I'm not, I've been over there several times.
Just one right across the street to the left.
Okay, well, across the street to the left, okay. Because you're going to have 11-year-old girl possibly coming onto an adult school campus, but it's going to be segregated enough.
That building is pretty separate, yeah.
Yeah, and then transportation. You run all year round?
We do, so...
Do you provide your own transportation? You use our buses?
That's a...
It depends. No, it truly, it truly all depends. There are some school districts where the school district partners with us, and, you know, it is the district transportation. There are some centers where we have school pa, or bus passes. You know, obviously, those are locations where there is a good grid of public transportation, and so, you know, girls get there or through the parents. So it really, that is part of the agreement. Yeah, and we tend to have a little bit of all of it, exactly. And so that's, as we continue to move forward, we would sit down with you all and really the community because you all know where the girls are at and what your transportation would look like, to look at what's the best solution.
What does PACE stand for? I don't think you've said that, have you, or?
Probably not. We just use the acronym, Practical Academic Cultural Education.
Oh.
And just a little bit of the history or the background, how did it get started? What was the beginning point for PACE?
So that was in 1985 when Vicki Burke, who was our founder, working with the juvenile justice system, could see firsthand that the girls just aren't responding to these techniques and these systems and these processes. And that's because they're girls. They function differently, they think differently. We need a different system of working with them. And so she basically was given some liberty to give that a try. I think she had a little room in a church.
A church basement.
And 10 girls, that the juvenile justice system said, give it a try and see what happens. And that was in 1985, and then 2012, it was across the state.
Is it just coincidence that it's, all of your leaders today are females too? Or is that because, I, I, I mean, it works for me, but I was raised by strong moms and two big sisters, so.
We are at our executive table. They are all women until March 19th. We are bringing our first man to the fold as our Chief Advancement Officer. So he's coming from Boys and Girls Club up in greater Atlanta. So it's kind of by coincidence, but...
So you do bond, though, quite a bit of leadership in roles, and that's awesome as well.
We do, and in leadership positions throughout centers throughout the state. You will find that we have to involve that as well.
Do you have men teachers?
Yes, and then counselors as well.
And now, your students are not court-ordered to attend or mandated in any way to attend. It's all voluntary.
We have relationships at the school, with the court systems, with JPOs, and so they can recommend, look into PACE as a potential solution, but not court-ordering.
All right. And so obviously, you've looked at some data from our county as far as you know that there is enough need for this program here, but can you share some of that, what you base that on? Do you have any information on that?
Because I told them we need...
That would be enough for us.
That's how the rest of the executive team works.
It's funny, so our Chief Business Officer, who does have IT and business intelligence in her realm, we sat with our president, CEO, last week to look at some data. So here, we showed programmatic data, but when we, when someone comes to us and says, hey, we want a center, one of the things we look at are some overall statistics. So we look at what, we look at poverty, we look at incarceration rates of adults, we look at incarceration rates of women, we look at all the things that are risk factors that lead to our girls being where they are at. And there's, we use a heat map. And what was interesting when we looked at citrus, which surprised us, and now this is because it's the number per thousand citizens, it was very high up on the heat map, much more so than what I would have expected. I think of a Broward or Dade, you know, the more metropolitan areas, absolute numbers, they have more of these things, but because of the larger population, they're not as high or as hot in the heat map. And so citrus fell in the third from the highest color in this heat map, you know, and I don't have the numbers memorized, but it's something that we looked at. And then we received a letter from Representative, I'm not going to remember the name. No, it wasn't Senator Simpson. It was just yesterday. I'm sorry.
Zula?
Yes, and so he actually, a letter yesterday to our president, and I just got it on my phone, so couldn't read, read it very well. But within there, in his request saying, hey, we really would be interested in here, he specifically gave us some data around, so for example, 900 students were arrested last year here in Citrus County. You know, he gave the breakdown of expulsions as well. So looking at just from this vantage point, you know, our girls are here, you know, within the community. And it is, you know, 50 girls is a very small percentage. There's a poem that one of our former executive directors used to love, and it's about a starfish, and people are like, out of all these millions of girls, like, really? You're going to impact 50? That's, that's nothing. And, you know, it's about this person on the beach who throws the sea, the starfish back in the water, and they say, well, it mattered to that one, right? It mattered to that one. And so we know we're small in scope, but it matters to Kylie and Giselle and in their future, so.
Let's get started.
And we'd like to thank Kylie and Giselle for coming up and talking. It's really difficult to do a room full of adults.
Crazy people here.
No. But thank you very much.
All right, do you have questions? All right, thank you. Very nice presentation.
Thank you very much.
We're very interested in you. Tell them.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. Let's make this quick as we can, just restrooms, and we'll be back in about five minutes.